Good evening. We're going to call the meeting to order. For this evening, the order of the items that we'll be discussing are as follows. The first will be 2019-10, 24 Hillside Terrace. Second will be 2019-09, 75 Hamilton Road. Third is 2018-1840 Riverview Road. Fourth is 2018-16, 115 South Broadway. Fifth will be 107 Harriman Road. Sixth is 2019-12, 8 Riverview Terrace. Seventh will be 2019-11, 57 Riverview Road. And eighth will be 2016-41, 41D North Broadway. So with that, Sarah, is everybody up to date on their taxes?
Yes.
And then we have two minutes. We have minutes from April and May. Any comments from any of the board members on those minutes? I know they were circulated in comments we made. No?
No.
If not, then can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If the minutes are approved. So with that, let's begin with 2019-10, Laura Wheeler, 24 Hillside Terrace.
Good evening. Good evening, for the record. I'm Sam Bier. I'm the project architect. Just to recap, we were here last month and the board referred us to the zoning board. The applicant was successful in obtaining all of the variances. Another point is the board had requested, this board had requested that we not have any increased impervious surface. We actually reduced impervious surface by taking away some stone patio area. We also received a letter from HAN Engineering that stated that all of the questions and information have been answered accordingly. So I'm hoping that we brought this to a close as far as the process.
Okay. Any comments from any of the board members?
I have a question. The downspout from the new two-story section there, there. It goes to daylight. It's pretty close to the property line. It was hard to tell the contours. Doug, that downspout is very close to the property line. Any drainage issues with the next-door neighbor?
This one, sir?
Yes, that one there.
Is that the existing one?
So this one is, this one is, right. So this one is actually going to connect to the existing system.
Oh, okay.
And the daylight is actually all the way over here.
I thought I saw the note that that was going to daylight. The one that you appointed, the one at the corner of the new?
I have it as location relocated roof leader connected to underground.
They're all going to daylight.
Eventually, right. Correct.
I thought it went to daylight there.
But they're being directed away from the neighbors.
Okay. No more comment?
Okay. Any other comments from the board? Any comments from anyone in the public on this matter? No? Right, then I think, Mary Ann, right, I guess there were no comments from our landscape architect, and you addressed all the comments that the village engineer had. So, Mary Ann, you have a resolution for this item?
In April 2019, Laura Wheeler applied for site development plan approval to construct additions in the deck on her house at 24 Hillside Terrace. The proposed additions would not meet the side yards' coverage and height requirements of the zoning code and therefore require variances from the zoning board of appeals. The ZBA granted the variances at its meeting on May 21st. HAN Engineering reviewed the plans and in memorandum dated April 2nd and April 26th, listed a number of issues with the proposal and site plan, all of which were satisfactorily addressed in a subsequent submission. Village's landscape consultant made a number of comments, all of which were adequately addressed in a subsequent submission. Planning board held a public hearing on April 3rd, May 1st, and June 5th. It's a type-two action under secret and therefore requires no environmental review. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board grants site development plan approval of the improvements reflected in the drawings entitled "Proposed Additions and Alterations to Wheeler Residence Prepared by Samuel Villera" and "The Stormwater Management Plan Prepared by Hudson Engineering." There is no conditions on this.
Can I have a motion to approve the resolution? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, the next item is 2019-09, 75 Hamilton Road, Yung Joon Su.
Hi, everyone. Mike Modewelli from Michael Lewis Architects. Since our last meeting, we have addressed all the comments from HAN Engineering and the landscape architect, and it seems like there are no additional comments, unless you have any, of course.
Any comments from any of the board members? You did, I think, you were, according to HAN, you met all the requirements for the wetland permit, and there were no additional comments on this. And I believe our landscape architect, you know, didn't have any additional comments. You met all her requests.
And was the floodplain addressed properly?
We have, we have a protocol for that.
Okay.
It's one of the, you know, here, it's one of the conditions of the resolution.
Okay.
Any other comments from any of the board members? Any comments from anyone in the audience on this matter? No? All right, Mary Ann, you have a resolution?
Yeah. In March 2019, Yung Joon Su applied for site development plan approval to construct a second-floor addition, rear deck, and covered front porch and stairs on his house at 75 Hamilton Road. The proposed improvements require floodplain, water bodies, and water courses and fresh water. Wetlands permits. HAN Engineering reviewed the plans and the memorandum dated March 4th and May 1st listed a number of issues, all of which were satisfactorily addressed in subsequent submissions. Planning board held a public hearing on the application on March 6th, May 1st, and June 5th, 2019. HAN reviewed the floodplain, water bodies, and water course and wetlands permit applications, and in the memorandum dated May 31st determined that all requirements for the permits are met. Suzanne Nolan, the village's landscape consultant, reviewed the plan, made several comments, all of which were addressed in subsequent submissions. It's a type-two action under secret and therefore requires no environmental review. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board grants floodplain, water bodies, and water course in wetlands permits, as well as site development plan approval for the improvements reflected in the drawings entitled "Modifications to 75 Hamilton Prepared by Michael Lewis Architects" and the drawings entitled "Proposed Additions and Alterations Prepared by Hudson Engineering Consulting," subject to the condition that soil and erosion control in the flood area be monitored during construction on a weekly basis by a certified professional.
Do you have a res?
A motion.
Any comment?
Any comments from any board members? Can I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Is there a motion?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You're approved.
Right. I believe we're?
Right, Cortese.
Yeah. 40 Riverview Road first. 20-18-18, Andrew Cortese, 40 Riverview Road.
Good evening. Albert from Hudson Engineering. Last I was at the planning board, we presented the new materials. There were a few minor comments which were addressed. I believe there's only one new comment regarding a tree or a few trees placed to the wall here, which we have no problem relocating, but we're essentially looking for approval pending that one condition.
Any comments from any board members? Any comments from anyone in the public on this matter? I think as long as it's worked out, whether they stay there or moved.
That's fine.
And it's satisfactory to the village engineer and the landscape architects. Mary Ann, you have a resolution on this matter?
In October 2018, Andrew Cortese applied for site development plan approval to construction, to construct an addition terrace pool and other improvements to his property at 40 Riverview Road, which would require several variances and extensive regrading. And the planning board expressed concern over the proposal's negative effects on the topography and woodlands on the site and suggested that the pool be eliminated. The applicant modified the site plan several times and eventually removed the pool from the plans. HAN Engineering reviewed the plans and in memorandum dated October 2nd, November 6th, November 30th, April 2nd, and April 26th, 2019, listed a number of issues which were satisfactorily addressed in subsequent submissions. Nolan Landscape Architects, the village's consultant, raised a number of issues which were satisfactorily addressed in subsequent submissions. Planning board held a public hearing on the application on October 3rd, November 7th, and December 5th, 2018, and April 3rd, May 1st, and June 5th, 2019. It's a type-two action under secret and therefore requires no environmental review. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board grants the application for site development plan approval of the improvements reflected in the drawings entitled "Cortese Residence Prepared by Christina Griffin" and the drawings entitled "Proposed Additions and Alterations Prepared by Hudson Engineering Consulting" and "The Landscaping Plan Prepared by Stephen Lopez," last dated May 7th, subject to compliance with the one item listed in the May 31st, 2019 HAN memorandum.
Thank you. Any comments from any of the board members? No? Can I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Is there a move?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next item is 2018-16, Katherine Daniels Brady, 115 South Broadway.
Good evening. Kaia Gam representing the client. Last meeting, I was asked to show a rendering of how the proposed wall would be interfacing with the neighbors, and we did that. There's also a long list of requirements, including the vegetation fence that would be used, and I had a conversation with Ms. Nolan regarding that, and we came to some conclusion about what would people invest for this. I know that I just received a letter today about some of the utilities that were not marked properly or cross-sections. I know that there's only two utilities showing directly on the survey, which is gas and water. So, and we don't really show any, you know, exact lines where they go into the house. I can certainly get the surveyor to do that if we can, if we can. The surveyor has to stake out the wall anyway. So if we have the surveyor locate all of these utilities, cables, I don't think there's any cable in the ground, but again, we hope that we can get an approval today. And again, of course, I will contact the water department to see how deep the various utilities are, but I, I'm thinking that the depth we're going with the, with the foundation is not going to reach what normally is required or what normally is in the ground.
Okay. Any comments from any of the board members?
I hope the wall stands up better than the shrubs.
Me too.
This is a really good plot.
Yeah, this is perfect. That's exactly what I wanted to see, the photograph.
Photoshop was very busy that day.
Good job.
And Doug, are you okay with this in terms of utility?
Yeah.
You know, we just want your permits so they can go to the ARB.
Right, they can go to the ZBA.
And the ZBA. ZBA, so by the time that they get all that done.
Perfect.
Don't wait on call the surveyor.
Right. Perfect, wonderful. Thank you so much. Yep, thank you.
Mary Ann, you have a resolution?
Yeah. In September 2018, Katherine Daniels Brady applied for site development plan approval to construct a stone wall on her property at 115 South Broadway. The location of the proposed wall lies within the Broadway buffer and therefore requires a variance from the zoning board of appeals. HAN Engineering reviewed the plans and in memorandum dated September 5th, 2018, and April 26th, 2019. I have the wrong date. Whoever's got the thing in front of them, change that to 2019.
April 26th, 2019?
Yeah. Listed a number of issues which were satisfactorily addressed in subsequent submissions. The village's landscape consultant made several comments which were adequately addressed in a subsequent submission. Planning board held a public hearing on the application on September 5th, 2018, May 1st, 2019, and June 5th, 2019. It's a type-two action under secret and therefore requires no environmental review. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board grants the application for site development plan approval of the improvements reflected in the drawings entitled "115 South Broadway Prepared by Kaia Gam Design," all as dated 5/17/19, subject to one, receiving a variance from the ZBA for work in the Broadway buffer, and two, complying with item two in the HAN memorandum dated May 31st, and that's the utility comment.
Can I have a motion to approve the resolution? Are there any comments? Motion to approve the resolution?
Is there a move?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You're approved.
This?
Next item is 2019-13, Terry Cohen, 207 Harriman Road.
Albert from Hudson, again. This is a project proposing a, I think it's 10.8 by 15 square foot patio in the rear yard and some minor regrading along the back to get rid of some bumps and divots in the area, and then stockade fencing along the front property line and deer fencing along the rest of the perimeter of the property. We had a few comments from HAN Engineering, which we'll work on addressing, including the trees and more details on the fence, and then getting the wetlands forms completed.
Well, the one comment I had on number one in HAN's memo, it's, I think you're doing grading construction within a regulatory floodway. I mean, do we usually allow or consider construction within a floodway? I mean, that is, that is the floodway for?
We need to see where it's. What that, knowing that, you should probably send that over to me sooner than later. That way we can take a look at it.
Got it.
Because it probably is within there, and you're supposed to?
We have this dashed line, however, the reality is, the main stream, if you will, is limited to this area here.
Yeah. The floodplain, 100-year floodplain is the wetlands line, and it's 25 feet from there.
The whole section?
Wherever the floodplain is.
Okay.
So if the floodplain goes into Sycamore Lane, which probably does, you take that line and then add 25 feet to it.
Gotcha.
We've, you haven't seen an activity in a floodplain.
And a floodplain, and particularly in a floodway, which is even?
You've worked with them in buffers, but you, I don't think it took very long time if you worked with one in the floodplain itself.
Yeah, in addition, check, check section 224-157D. Can you remember that, 224-157D? Which says in general, no activity is allowed within 25 feet. So you'd have to make a pretty compelling case why it was necessary.
And that activity includes grading, not simply construction?
Yeah, I think we, I think we have to take a look at what it is that you're proposing to do and what the impact would be before we don't even consider it.
Gotcha. And then again, just, this is just simply a patio, a blue stone patio on grade, nothing more.
Right.
I understand.
There are incremental changes within a floodplain or in a floodway, and while that incremental change may not seem like much, what happens is, when you add up all the incremental changes that people want to make within a floodway or floodplain, you end up with flooding. And that's what I, that's what we found when I was working with county planning department. We were doing flood, stormwater management projects for each of the, each of the basins in Westchester County. That's what we found was one of the main concerns, is municipalities would allow individual minor changes within the floodplain, but then to look at what you're doing overall, because when you look at what you're doing overall, when you have the flooding that you have in the Swanmore River in Elmstree, and that's what happens. So I think that's, that's why we want to take a look at this.
The west side of the patio is going to have to be raised, otherwise, I assume you want the patio level, it's going to have to be raised. So you're raising it above the?
Yeah, leveling it out, yeah.
Yeah, so you're taking, you're taking space away from the incremental taking of floodplain.
Yeah, you're going to have to make sure that there's no, yeah. Any other comments from any of the board members?
Isn't then the profile of the house within this floodplain? We need to see it on the plan, but most likely.
Yeah. Right. It may be then?
It depends on the elevation of this surge channelized there, because the house to upstream was a pump house at one time. So it's a very interesting setup.
Corner of the house hits that park. Yeah. The big house itself is not in that 25.
Actually, this is the actual end of the house. Technically, it's the deck that's?
So magically, they made the house?
25 feet out.
Magic.
Magic.
No, no, that, that 25-foot mark is not.
It's the one that you're off the wall.
No, it's inaccurate to our needs.
Oh.
Because that 25-foot mark is supposed to be from the edge of the 100-year floodplain, not from the inlet and stream.
Now, so that means it's much?
We don't, yes. He's had, he's going to have to get the surveyor most likely to do a towboat survey. The survey doesn't show the inlet or the structure for the inlet. It makes it very difficult for us to start judging things with these spot elevations so that the towboat can match the flood map.
It'll probably help out in a way, to give you an actual elevation in case, you know, flood.
This is not just an Irvington thing. DEC looks at floodplains. Recently, they were just down here over the last year, so it is, it is a concern.
Yeah, this is not a buffer activity. This is a floodplain, most likely, activity. And that's, you haven't seen that. The board hasn't seen that. I think the last one was at the top of Harriman Road.
Yeah, the top there.
Harriman Field Drive.
How even on?
Driveways.
Probably not.
Thank you. Okay. Thanks. Well, I'm sorry, any comments from any members in the audience?
I came in a little bit late.
Yep, come up.
Please come up and take one of the microphones. State your name and address.
I literally ran out, I'm sorry.
You need the mic.
Hi, my name is Beth Blas. I'm in, are you talking about 107 Harriman?
Yes.
Okay, I live in the house next door, not the former, not the pump house.
Which one next door?
121.
Harriman?
Yes. No, on Sycamore.
Are you on the other side of Sycamore Lane?
Yeah, the house that borders where the patio and the deer fence would be.
Oh, so at the top there.
I guess so. I'm just trying to look at where this is.
This is Sycamore, this is Harriman.
Yeah, so Sycamore, so I would be that first house in. I was just chatting with Terry, one of the owners of 107 Harriman, literally on the phone. I'm just trying to understand if it would be any kind of obstructed view. We're actually, our house is actually on the market, but we don't want to do anything to cause it to look, you know, like, like some things, like, like there's too much work going on. She said she's building a deer fence, a patio, and doing something regarding the water that comes from the stream there. We can see all of this from our house. Is there anything that's going to be, I guess, not look pleasant from the next-door neighbor standpoint?
You'd have view of the deer fence and the patio, the patio is great, if you want to really see that.
So the deer fence, we would, though. It would be on our side of the property and not theirs.
What's the deer fence going to look like? Is it a chain link fence or what is it?
It's basically just a lattice.
It'll look like that.
Well, either black or green, we take it.
Black or green.
The typical deer.
You see the crosshatching at the lower left-hand corner? That's what it will look like.
I think if you drive along North Broadway, you can see, if you're going more north of the roadway, look to the left, there are several houses. There's one house in particular that has a deer fence that's right down along North Broadway, so you can see what a deer fence would look like.
Right, but we don't know what color, black or green?
Usually, those are the usual colors of it, because you want it?
Okay, so the architectural review board, this is not the board for the deer fence, for the color, that, that, the style of fences, they stand up at the architectural review board. They made an application, but then we sent it in for a six-foot fence. Here it shows an eight-foot fence on the application. So Bob, you're going to have to get the owner to figure out which one they want.
So that's pretty high. It's going to be pretty visible for a long time.
It's not approved, yeah. An eight-foot fence has a special approval process, which involves you, so.
Eight foot is about the height of the ceiling.
Yeah, that's pretty tall.
No, we have a protocol for deer fences.
That would be awful from my standpoint.
It's an, it's an award.
The wrong board.
The irony is that in a lovely town in Bedford, they have now 12-foot-high fences, and deer still jump. They jump over the eight footers. I've seen it.
Right, but an eight-foot fence?
Crazy.
On the border of?
Very impressive when they do it.
Yeah, but that's still, that's quite a scene.
It's quite a visual impact.
Quite a visual impairment, there we go.
Impact could be.
Impact.
What is along the border of Ms. Blas' property and the applicant's property? What's there now?
This would be deer fence right now.
What's there now?
I don't think.
Any shrubs, any?
There's a bunch of little shrubs or something.
Little trees?
Well, they're actually very tall trees, but we got hit pretty hard from one of the storms last year, so a lot of them were cut down. But there are scattered trees in between the properties right now.
We're not sure.
No, I think this, well, this is the additional information that's going to have to be shown, and we're just at the start of the process here. We have to go out and take a look at it and see what.
Right, but an eight-foot, that's the first I'm hearing. She said it would be, she said you won't see the deer fence. I literally just got off the phone with her an hour ago. She said you won't, and this was the notice we got in the mail, you won't see the deer fence. We'll have bushes in front of it. I said, so you have bushes on your side of the fence? And she said, well, yeah, technically, yes. So we'll see the whole deer fence. An eight-foot is about the size of this. To me, that's, you know?
Imposing.
Imposing. You keep coming up with the right word. Imposing. I mean, I want them to be happy and them to be able to do what they want with their property, but as long as it doesn't impose on, on our property next door.
All right, well, there's still some more information that has to be presented to us, and you'll have an opportunity to speak again.
Right, and I think we've heard it pretty clearly from the neighbor that they're interested in being addressed.
Gotcha.
Approval for an eight-foot fence, a deer fence, requires neighbor's notification specifically.
Notification or approval or?
Notification.
So what does that, that doesn't do anything?
That's for another time. You're, you'll have to have the same conversation with a different board.
With the notification, you can go before the ARB, which makes the decision.
This, this board doesn't make a decision on eight-foot fence.
I see.
So we do make a decision about screening.
Yes. So if, if the fence was pulled in by five feet and put the screening on outside of the fence?
You still can't approve eight-foot fence.
Yeah, no. Well, we can prove, we can comment on the screen.
Any comments?
We could approve a six-foot fence.
Congratulations, ARB.
Well, it's part of the site plan, don't we?
Yeah, you can approve location, but it could still be denied at an ARB.
Anything else?
Were we looking for it as we pulled in and screening on the outside?
I'm not, I'm not ready to say anything, because we haven't been given a site plan that's complete enough to make a determination what's out there now.
Okay.
And once we see what's out there, then it's a better idea of where the fence should be or could be.
The other stands, but not just the.
Fence exactly goes right through the stream.
We have, we need a better plan. We're, we're not ahead of ourselves.
We'll provide more detail, all right, so?
Thank you.
Next item is 2019-12, Mark and Allison Weintraub, 8 Riverview Terrace.
Good evening. I'm James Martinez. I'm representing King Cavill and Gregory Engineers for this proposed project at 8 Riverview Terrace. The owners and applicants are Mark and Allison Weintraub. So at this site, all the roof drains are being let out onto the surface, all four of them located around the building, and it's creating problems to their neighbors in the backyard. There's flooding. I have pictures on the other side of this board that I could show you. What we're proposing is a underground detention system to kind of mitigate the, the rate at which the runoff is leaving the site, along with a landscaping boulder wall for regrading purposes, kind of like lift it up, to put this kind of detention system in there. kind of like lift it up, to put this kind of detention system in there. I know the site itself is already above the limit for impervious surfaces. It's pre-existing non-conforming by about 450 square feet. This boulder wall will be probably about, let's say, three feet high, maybe three feet wide, probably about 180 square feet increase in that, so I know we're gonna have to get a variance for it, but that's, that's our plan.
Was enough information provided, Doug, to make a determination whether what they're proposing to do, while it may mitigate flooding on this particular site, what the impacts will be on the adjacent properties?
Well, I guess first, what's the, what's the main issues right now, the conditions that you mentioned?
Oh, there's flooding coming, but I have pictures on the side.
Can you show them? Just show them on the plan.
Oh, on the plan, okay.
Do you need to see on the plan?
Do you want these too? These are even better.
So the runoff is coming off-site and from the roof drains, overland, down, and coming down, flooding out the neighbors to the back and to the back left.
And it comes from where?
Here, follows, kind of swirls around. There's erosion on this side of the house, and it kind of curves around the back of the house.
Does the road, runoff stay on the road?
Yes, gonna ask that.
Does, yes.
Yes.
Is there a lip on the driveway that prevents runoff from coming, from shooting down, shooting from the street on?
You get nothing from the street.
Yes.
He said it, but it wasn't in the mic. Could you say whatever he says?
We don't get any runoff from the street on our property.
Identify yourself.
My name's Mark Weintraub, and we don't get any runoff from the street on our property.
Where does the driveway drain?
To my knowledge, there...
I'll tell you exactly.
The driveway drains to a low spot here at the back left and ends up on our neighbor's property. It's done that forever.
That's none of our concerns.
This project doesn't impact that at all.
It's still none of our concerns.
Is there a way to fix it?
Why do I have to fix it?
Because this water shouldn't be concentrated directed to anybody's property at any time, and the way the wall is configured, you're channelizing any water that comes out there to your neighbor, to your back, so we're worried about that.
I'm sorry, I don't follow. This pipe has been there since the house was built 60 years ago.
I understand.
And you're talking beyond the driveway where the wall is being constructed, and between that wall and the south property line, you know, where that water is going?
It'll create a concentrated load going in there when it's all done. Once the wall's built, it'll create a concentrated load.
On what?
You're saying that all goes there, you're saying that all goes there right now?
Yeah, all the water in this driveway ends up either here or it goes down these steps and ends up in my backyard.
Watch schedule plan, we'll talk about that.
The three steps?
Yeah, no, those are different steps. This is, this whole project is something we don't need to do, and we're doing it to help our neighbors out.
That's what I was just about to say, is I think it's probably the first time since I've ever been here that you're coming in proactively.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay? There's no other screaming neighbor with...
They've only screamed positively in notes that are in the application process.
In your files, it's gonna say...
There are two letters of support.
Yeah.
So I just was like, wait a second, let me just make sure I understand exactly what's going on. So thank you for doing that.
Is there a rock out there, is that why you're...
Yeah, we have ledge rocks, so we can't put in... There are existing somewhere back in, when the house was built in 1960, there are drywells somewhere in here that are filled up or whatever. We moved in the downspouts, we're emptying out onto the lawn, and what we're trying to do is, our yard gets quite swampy, and the water goes into our neighbor's yard, and we want to remedy that. That's what this is all about.
Well, I think, I think what you have to do is, I appreciate what you're saying, that you're trying to improve the situation, but I think you just have to address the engineer's comments, just so that we see mathematically-wise and engineering-wise that what's being proposed is actually going to benefit the neighbors and not make anything worse in the area. And I think that's what our concern is. That's what my concern is.
Yeah, we've got the comments this afternoon, so I'll go over them, respond to them.
No, I wouldn't expect you to. I mean, take those comments and go through them, and then if you need to speak to Doug or to Ed Marin, go speak to them and work out what has to be worked out.
Is there, is there anything we can discuss here, so we don't have to come back and do? I mean, it's...
This really isn't the venue to discuss the engineering issues. I think that's really offline to speak to the engineer about that.
May I ask you a question?
Sure.
Sorry, we've never done this before.
Identify yourself with a transcript.
Mark's wife, Allison Weintraub. I didn't know whether or not you have the photos that are here in your packets, but I wanted to make sure that you can really see the extent of the water after a rainfall in terms of how much it stands and literally how much it's like a waterfall down our neighbor's property. I wanted to show you a video that my neighbors, oh, well, first a picture that my neighbors took, I think is even more representative, last week when, this is the video, the picture of what we're doing to our neighbors. That's just really untenable for them. And that's the land property. And then just so you can hear the waterfall in terms of just what they're coping with, this is what she took, Zoe. I mean, that's just untenable to go into their house, just so you could see it too. Sorry. She texted me this video. So it's just, we're trying to be good neighbors.
All right, I understand that, and I think this board is not opposed to that. Obviously, we're in favor of that, but I think we just need to make sure that engineering-wise, that that is confirmed by, by your engineer to our engineer. That's what has to be done.
Well, I think, I was gonna say that, again, this is the first time I've seen someone do something like this, so sometimes that means something. That is there a way that we can do this? We can sort of give an approval pending that, that the engineers, between the two engineers, there's an agreement that you're not going to make the impact any greater, but everything you're gonna do is going to be...
My suggestion is have to go out there and meet with their engineer and just work it out.
I mean, conceptually, there's nothing out there now, and they're putting in a system, so it's gonna, it's gonna be better.
Well, with the benefit, we have to make sure that there's no concentrated load created.
No, I understand that. I don't want to blow back, you don't want to make mistakes.
So the two concerns we have are the existing driveway getting worse, as it dumps off, and it's not going into any system, and the outfall for the overflow brings it around in front of the wall into a concentrated load, and this is not a detention system, it's a retention system. It does, it's not, no room for a detention system. So, so, excuse me. So those two concerns need to be well reviewed, because spending money on something and making something worse isn't why we're, why we're here.
No, I understand that. I'm just trying to figure out a way to streamline this so that this doesn't become a...
And without the engineer's drawings, to be honest, we couldn't have seen both conditions. So now that I have it on the paper, it's, it's, it's not a, actually, it's a little tighter, I suppose.
This is sort of one of those engineer-to-engineer kind of thing, as opposed to us toops up here, and it's almost like if we can bypass us and leave it in the hands of those...
But that's on the, the village coops.
Okay, should I try? Sorry.
Thank you.
But I think if, as Ed is saying, if Doug meets with your engineer at the site and they address all the issues, then when you come back here next month, it should be fine.
So we've gotta come back next month?
Yes, assuming that, yes.
So there's no, there's no way for it to be done today, based on...
No resolution can be reversed at that point.
I don't know what that means, I'm sorry.
The first four applications have resolutions written. They could hear from anyone's and some of them anyone's, some of them not.
I think you can be on it.
Once we've comfortable with the application, a resolution will be written.
Okay. Can I ask you a question? Detention, retention, what's the difference?
Your engineer can explain it to you if you want.
It's okay.
He's saying one infiltrates into the ground, the other one, it just stores it, and then that volume continues downstream, slowly, so it goes in and comes out slowly.
Thank you.
Any other comments from any board members? Any comments from anyone in the audience on this side?
Is there any other alternatives, the off-site, those village storm drain system?
No storm drains on the street. There's one.
That area is tough up, it's all rock and it's steep and it's...
The only thing I would tell you is that you should be careful with, I don't know how your stone wall is, whatever you do, but if it's by code, you'd be careful about people falling off.
Okay.
It's not, it's not of any, the, this, which, the stone wall that we're putting in?
It's gonna be underground, isn't it?
Yeah, I mean...
It looks like you're, perhaps I'm not reading this correctly, but it looks like on the outside base, it's down below.
It's gonna be covered with...
Yeah, yeah, this, this wall, noted, we'll, we'll...
Any other comments?
No.
So hopefully we'll see you next month then.
All right, thank you.
You want this back?
You can leave it here, we'll take it. Just leave it there.
Next item is 2019-11, Lori, Tom Sarvio, and Stacy McLaughlin, 57 River View Road.
Hi, Mike Marwell again from Architectural Architects. We received the comments from Han, everything seemed pretty straightforward, so we'll address those. The only question I had was from a comment by the landscaping, landscape architect, recommendation to show existing and proposed plantings that will provide screening of the proposed gazebo from adjacent, excuse me, properties. I'm wondering if that's necessary, considering we have a, the gazebo's going here, and we have a, you know, a pretty tall six-foot fence here, and then we have a fence in the back as well.
Okay, well, maybe you just want to speak to Suzanne Nolan and explain that to her, but it's shown on the plan that you have, on the plan that was submitted, that you have this six-foot fence there already?
It wasn't. This was recently added.
Okay, so that's, that's why, okay.
Ed, he said it was recently added, the fence, was that an approved fence or...
It has a permit. It's not, it wasn't on the...
Should they add that to the site plan then?
Right.
Just add it to the site plan, according to survey.
Well, is there any issue with the shed?
The shed, we, I find any documentation on the shed, how old is it?
Not sure.
That's fine. And the old walls don't look adequate, was coverage included in your calculation for the rear walls?
Okay.
So it's possible they still may need a variance for that shed.
Well, the problem is that the shed is undocumented, I can't find any documentation. It needs a side yard or rear yard variance, and then I'm not sure about the walls, if they're gonna get you closer coverage, they either, the shed's coming down or you get a variance for the sheds if you can't find documentation, and your coverage, you might be making the gazebo a little smaller if you did not know the walls.
Okay.
The shed is not in your comments, is it?
You mean, is the document being...
Yeah.
No, I'm sorry. We've mentioned the wall.
I don't remember, I don't remember hearing it. So just be aware, it's a comment in addition to what's in the high memo. You've got the high memo, generally you can just go through the, this is not in that memo.
Okay. So even if it's not, you can't find any reference, and it's been there for...
Documentation, I have, I have original house plans, I have addition house plans with a survey, and I have no shed on.
Okay.
So I have a very extensive file, you're welcome to browse through it again. If it's a very, very old shed that was there when the house was built, we'll talk. That's why I didn't want to be committed to saying it's not documented shed.
Okay.
If it's a vinyl shed, it's gone.
It's not original.
Yeah, it's not original.
And if it, if it is undocumented, it should be removed from the existing coverage counts.
Okay.
Build the proposal. Ends in setbacks.
So we need a variance as well.
Yeah, why don't you come right up through our files, and then we'll come to a conclusion, you guys make a decision with the owner.
Okay.
Any other comments from any board members? Any comments from any one of the public?
Here you go.
Thank you.
Last item is 2016-40, Cameron and Alana Lewis, 41 River View Road.
John Lurin, face one architecture, representing Cam and Alana Lewis. We're here today to revise the approved site plan, to make modifications to the retaining wall on the rear of the property and the patio configuration on the rear of the property. The revisions that are being proposed reduce the coverage from the approval slightly from where it was, and we have provided revised civil drawings indicating the change, and I think the comments that we've received here from Han will address, I think, I don't know if there's any specific ones that people want to go through. There was a few that we would request verification on, Doug, there while we were here, just a moment, and we'll...
Call us tomorrow, it's over.
We have, James, okay.
Any comments from any board members?
We want to just talk about the swing set.
Yeah, they were...
No, we didn't, Doug, but I think the swing set's coming out completely.
No, that was one of my comments, the swing set.
Well, one of the requirements of our approval at the time was that the swing set is removed, so you'll see here that the swing set is coming out.
Well, it was to be moved, not removed, it was to be moved out of the...
Right, 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 right. So rather than, it's not in a condition that would make sense for you to getting it, so we're just eliminating it.
What about the existing shed?
That's to clear up on the first approval.
Yeah, so the existing shed, there was a variance for the existing shed that's staying in place and being screened with additional plants.
Got any room to put screening?
Yeah, I mean, we showed what, we showed some woodland natives around the thing that would, you know, make it better than the condition that's there now.
Nice haircut.
Yeah, right. Though, yeah, I think, I think James just has some questions about item four, which was the tributary area. We think it has to do, not matching the grading, we think that we, it has something to do with the slopes of the patios going to the drains, but if it's not that, I think you guys should hear what that, what that is with you. But I think everything else is doable.
Yeah, Doc's memo doesn't refer to Suzanne's comments. She has substantial comments on this, so they could give...
You can take mine, John, I mean, you should see if these have to be addressed. I mean, is, is all of the work done at this point, other than these changes that they're requesting? Are we still, this is still an open...
This is an open...
Some work started, but that wasn't documented, wasn't appropriated.
Oh, okay.
It's not work on the job at this point because of that.
Okay, then why don't you take this and make sure that you're addressing Suzanne Nolan's comments, and to, I think there are four comments, John, I can go to the next.
In terms of tree protection, okay.
Yeah, tree protection and, I think shrubs.
Yeah. John, I don't know much of the work that still has to be done. The tree protection issue might be, if that was a conversation, that should be settled.
We can, we can, we can address it.
We're on the plan.
We can, I mean, they should put it in place, because we don't know how they bring in material in.
Yeah, there's no reason not, yeah. But if the main excavation and that kind of stuff, heavy stuff is...
Okay.
Right.
But again, just to make sure that no damage...
Maybe if you're concerned if one's got Susan on the wall on site, with the affected area, just the affected area, so maybe that'd be an easier way of resolving the problem.
Right, have her tell me more, she wants to know.
Otherwise, we might just go back and forth.
All right, got it.
Is that okay, Pat?
Yes, that's good. Any comments from any of the board members? No? Comments from any of the public?
What were the undocumented mistakes? They, the wall that was there was, what I was told from the, from the owner was that it was collapsing when they tried to repoint it, so she had them just rebuild it, but they didn't rebuild it in exactly the same place.
Or the same station.
Yeah, it needs to be...
Or the same size.
It needs to be rebuilt in the same place.
Or the same shape.
Right, so...
And then just start a patio that was gonna be a landing strip, we won't get into that conversation.
Yeah, so, we stopped them, we tried to stop them, but Ed actually stopped them.
I absolutely remember that, because it's one windows, it really solves the problem.
Yeah, Ed actually stopped them. But, but the, you know, it's approximately in the same location, there's not a lot of impact.
They reduced the size since the stop work order to meet the drainage approval.
Right, right, yeah, we basically said, you can't...
You can't get better.
I don't think any of the board members have any comments, so it's if you meet Doug's and Ed's and Suzanne's comments, I think we should be okay.
Okay.
I mean, my own comment is broken, my board.
Okay, and that, just want to make sure Doug, Doug is okay with it, and then Suzanne is okay with it in terms of protecting any trees that might still need protection as a result of the different work that has to be done now.
But then he still has to come back, is that right?
Yes, he still has to come back, with the answers to those questions, yeah.
Yeah, I just want to make sure you're the same as the community, right?
That's right.